I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, first action item on the agenda is ratification of requests for special appropriation to create a special education development fund. The memorandum is in the packet. Chair and entertain a motion to approve the memorandum. Eric moves. Is there a second? Yvette, second. Any discussion? I'll just point out that this is the request that was submitted by Dr. Adamowski and the Finance Committee for the special appropriation to set up the special education fund. Technically, we have to have this ratified by vote of the full board so we can go to the Board of Estimate Taxation at its May meeting. So that's the purpose of the ratification vote. If there's no other discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion, please indicate. And it is unanimous. Thank you. The second item is approve the designation of the month of April as Autism Awareness Month. There's a resolution in the packet. Is there a motion to approve?
Some are.
Eric moves. Artie, second. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of adopting the resolution, please indicate. And that is also unanimous. Thank you. All right, next is policy reports. I'll just point out that tonight, we're not going to be acting on these two policies. Under our bylaws, policies have to get presented at a board meeting, and then these would then come back for an actual board vote in two weeks on the 19th. So I'll turn this over to the Policy Chair, Ms. Keys, for the reports.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. We actually just had a policy meeting prior to the board meeting this evening. We've been working on School Governance Council. It actually started during our retreat over the summer, and we discussed it during our retreat. Back in November, it was brought to policy. So we've been looking at this, delving into it, getting draft after draft, and really digging our nails into this policy. I just wanted to get it out to the public as far as this policy for school governance councils. There may be a perception that we might have rushed through this, but we really haven't. We've been working on this since November with all policy members and really discussing it. What I'd like to talk to you about this evening also is we've had many members come from the public. We've had teachers, all stakeholders, teachers, principals come, PTO members, teacher union president, vice president come. So we've had to try to have as many people as possible give their input, advice, as well as suggestions for this policy. I'm going to briefly, I think everybody should have a draft of this, as Mr. Lyons had mentioned, again, we're just discussing it. We're not taking any type of action. During our policy meetings, when we approve it, we bring it to the full board for discussion, usually during a workshop meeting, and then the subsequent meeting will hopefully be an action item on this. So there's a lot of dialogue, a lot of language in here. We have about four pages, so I'm just going to highlight some of the key areas. Dr. Adamowski, if I'm missing anything, or if you want to interject as I go along, please do. As far as the purpose, it's consistent with the Board of Education's adopted theory of action and its commitment to create and maintain a system of high-performing schools within the Norwalk Public Schools. Definition, we call it SGC. It's the School Governance Council. It's the primary local school decision-making body of a school devoted to achieve its mission as well as its vision. Membership, it shall consist of 12 members plus up to three non-voting members, depending on the school. If you move down where it states member, number, and election process, parents are guardians of the students at the school. We're looking for a number of seven. Elected by the parents are guardians of the students attending that particular school. Teachers at the school, we're looking at five, and they're elected by the teachers, by their peers at the school as well. Community leaders, we're looking at two, elected by the parent and teacher members of the council. School principal, non-voting, that's a non-voting member of this council, and that's the principal. Additional members, we have in our high schools. They will consist of two members, and we're looking student body, one from each class, from the junior class, and then one from the senior class. And those two members will be non-voting. So you have a total of 12 members, and then you have two additional that will be non-voting. We turn to the next page. All members that are part of this council are equal partners in decision-making, and all decisions are made by consensus. Of either two-thirds majority vote of those voting council members in attendance, where consensus has not achieved, and a vote may be required. Some of the requirements. All members shall be required to participate in initial annual training, which we're working on. Dr. Adamowski, is that correct? At some point, we'll be having training provided by the district, which is by Norwalk Public Schools. Selection and terms of the members. Members of the council shall be selected, and we talked about this, parent representation shall be selected from parents. Teachers shall be selected by teachers. Members representing one or more partner organization shall be invited to serve as elected members of the council, which is really important, the next part. The council shall represent, and we have feedback from some members of the community that came, shall represent the diverse interests of the families and staff that make up the local school community. Every effort as part of the council shall be made to engage broad representation in the council election process. You know, we wanted to reflect the diversity of our school system, which is very important, and that was added. Voting members have a two-year term, and no one member can serve more than two terms on a council. The non-voting student members, and those are at our high school, shall serve a one-year term. No student member can serve more than two terms. And it's important to have student representation, which we will have in our two high schools, or three high schools, I should say. Roles and responsibilities. You have parent and co-chair. A parent-co-chair of the Governance Council shall be elected annually by the members. The co-chairs shall set agendas. They'll preside over the council meetings. They'll also attend biannual district-wide meetings of the SGC co-chairs with Dr. Adamowski, our superintendent, and an annual meeting of the SGC co-chairs with us, the Board of Education, which might be, Dr. Adamowski, is that part of the policy, the meeting policy, or just the whole board?
No, that would be the whole board. This is a part of your management oversight. You remember when Dr. Trevino talked to you about the fact that every good policy had a management oversight provision. You need to have a way of knowing how things are going, and whether this is going well and what adjustments to make. And so you would have any annual opportunity to discuss this with the co-chairs of the council and really know what everyone's doing or not doing, and what adjustments might be made based upon their feedback.
Okay. Thank you. And the following page, the principal shall serve as the council co-chair, making recommendations to the council. And just as a reminder, the principal is a non-voting member of the council. Some of the duties of the council members, there's a lot, so again, I'm just going to highlight some of the key roles. As a member of the council, it's a lot of, you're taking upon a lot of ownership, a lot of responsibility. I mentioned this before, it's almost a notch below a Board of Ed member, huge amount of responsibility. And it's really giving the onus and the ownership back to the schools and the parents and the teachers, as well as the students. It will conduct at least one meeting per year, to which all parents and teachers of the school are invited. You want to share your vision, your mission and goals of the school. That will be discussed as well as evaluated. In addition, some roles of the council members, analyze student achievement data, develop and approve the school annual resource allocation, which is the budget. In the event of a vacancy in the principalship, the council shall serve as a local interview committee, so they're also going to be conducting interviews with the slate of candidates provided by the district and recommended to the superintendent of schools, which is Dr. Adamowski. In addition, the council shall assist the principal in the selection process for teachers as well as other certified positions. So they're going to be interviewing prospective candidates for their own individual school. Promote the school as a parental choice relative to its enrollment goals. Develop and approve a written parent involvement policy that outlines the role of parents and legal guardians in the school. Again, it's all about ownership and really taking responsibility and being part of that school community. Following page, provide advice and assistance to the principal on matters of importance to parents or legal guardians. Inform the Board of Education relative to the school's facility needs. So that's important as well. If there's something happening within the school, its facilities, you would advise central office of that, and we would see what we can do for that. Participate as well in the school's before and after-school program. We have a lot out there for before and after, so the School Governance Council in that particular school will take ownership of the before and after-school program. This is also another topic, determine the need for school uniforms and any type of unique school attire to be worn. I've spoken to some parents in the past that are very interested in school uniforms. Some aren't. So that's the decision upon the School Governance Council in your school, whether you might have a uniform policy or not. Other provisions, the council shall comply with Norwalk Board of Education regarding policies, procedures, as well as contractual agreements. School Governance Council meetings are open to all parents of the school, and it's all about engagements. We really want parents to be involved. You know, we want to open it up to all parents, and hopefully, some of them that are there will be part of the School Governance Council. We want to give everybody an opportunity to be involved. Moving down, superintendent's power to suspend provision of policy 1211. Schools that are designated as intervention schools by the superintendent shall be subject to reduction in their autonomy, intervention and support from Norwalk Public Schools administration. That isn't our goal. We want all of our schools to be successful in this. You know, we're here as a board central office to support all of our schools. We want all of our schools to be viable in this, to take a keen interest in this, to take ownership. That is our goal, and we really want parent engagement. It's all about parent engagement and being involved in your school's destiny, which is really key and critical on this. That's my part on this for now. Do you think I've spoken enough for now? Dr. Adamowski, do you want to add anything that I might have missed, or?
No, I know there was an issue over when the council should be organized.
Yes, yes.
And again, we have had quite a bit of input on that. I think there are some schools that would be ready to do that at the end of this year. There may be others that would not, and so I think kind of the provision that would meet all needs would simply say that the councils will be functioning by October 1 of the next school year.
Yeah, I was thinking one approach we could take would be we could give schools the option to elect in either May or September. If the school wanted to organize in May, they could do it at that time.
So practically speaking, that would be the case if you said they had to be functioning by October.
And I think some are already in the process of getting ready. I know that, from what I've heard, there was a principal meeting not too long ago. I spoke to Ms. Williams about that, and she had mentioned that for some, which is understandable, there's a learning curve. So some are ready, some aren't ready. So I think it's important for the ones that are ready can have the elections in May or prior to October. Some will be ready by September, by the fall. But I think as long as we're up and operating by October 1st, we'll give that leeway time.
Yeah, I think that would be appreciated by a number of schools, and all schools would be supportive of that.
Is it open?
Yes, Ms. Lyons. Yep, open for discussion.
Okay, great. Thank you. A couple of things. And there were concerns about the makeup of the council and the outreach effort that's being put in place to make sure that it is a representation of the entire school. Some, at a couple of our meetings, it was brought up to us about the PTOs and them sitting on the School Governance Council as well, if these councils are going to be a reflection of the PTOC council. And that was some concerns with a few individuals that were sitting in the room, and then it's out there in the community as well, because we're trying to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to be able to sit on these councils. And I'm trying to figure out how are we, or will there be something put in place that can ensure that everyone will have a fair representation when we go out and start choosing, or when the schools start choosing the individual to sit on on these councils, to make sure that everyone has an opportunity or chance to be part of it, instead of it being a particular group or, you know, of people. And so that was one of the concerns there of how we're going to go and try to implement that or make sure and ensure that once this becomes a school governance council, because then the schools are responsible for picking their own councils, and we don't have that much of a say with that. And then, the other issue too, was just this section number F, the superintendent power to suspend provision of policy 1211. And I know that we said with intervention school that, you know, the superintendent and central office can step in and take over the school. Now, there was some, we're curious to find out how this would work with, right now, I know it's just talk, you know, about the neighborhood schools and trying to get the school open up and maybe Nathaniel Ely. How would that affect that school? Because if you look at this, if we decide to go to our neighborhood schools and move all kids, in the end, if all the children are put down in Nathaniel Ely's school and are taken out from other schools, at this point, a lot of the children now are at different, you know, at different levels. And if you put them all in one school, it's going to end up being where that school is going to turn out to be in intervention school. And as for having those, you know, parents and the community as their own school governance council, that will be taken away from them, and they won't have that opportunity, because when you put a bunch of kids and when you do the first testing on these kids, you are going to find some low, because you got kids on all different levels. So I'm just curious as to how we're going to work with that, if we're going to sit there and say that we want to do a neighborhood school, and let's say Nathaniel Ely is that school, and we bring all these children in there, and when they take these, and when they're tested, they will fall into that intervention status. So that takes away that school governance council opportunity from that school and that community.
So you've raised a number of questions, and let me see if I can answer at least a few of them. First of all, I would not characterize school intervention and support as the district taking over a school. We do have about 50% of our lowest-performing students congregated in four or five of our 19 schools currently, right? We have a responsibility under our theory of action to provide additional intervention and support in those cases, to improve those schools. The point of this clause in the policy is simply to say that the School Governance Council cannot have the same level of autonomy in that kind of a setting, because we have to do things that will improve the school. And, you know, all of these things are geared toward student achievement. Now, as far as the application of this to the prospect or the possibility of having a school in South Norwalk, specifically on the Ely site, you know, I think that's largely a theoretical proposition at this point. It would take us three years to build a school. It would take another three years of data to even consider a school for intervention. I think we have received input from the community around the ideal being an intra-district magnet school. And I think we have a number of schools now that have a high concentration of minority students currently that are so-called neighborhood schools. I think our intention here would be to have less in Ely and have more integration. And, you know, we do not have a direct line between a student's minority status and achievement in our district at all. If anything, there's a relationship between income. And so, you know, the idea here would be to have an effective school that was integrated in terms of student backgrounds and incomes. But this is a long way away. Again, at least six or seven years. And if properly designed, you know, I think we should design it to ensure that that would not be the case. We want any new school we build, wherever it is, and whatever community wants it, to be a shining example of what we can do in the future and not what has happened in the past, or may have happened in the past.
Any other comments, questions?
I actually have about five, but they should be fairly quick. The first two relate to ensuring that we have a wide range of participation in terms of the parents. So the first question is the location of the meetings. I know in my instance, for my parents, related to my first and second question is, sometimes transportation would have been difficult to get to the schools. So would the meetings only be held at the schools, or would they have alternative locations where they can have the meetings?
My guess would be at the schools, but I mean, that could be an option, each individual school, if they want to have it at a different location. But I would guess that we would have it, my guess would be right at the school.
And if parents want to participate, and they seem to have difficulty in terms of transportation, then the council is open to having the meetings elsewhere? Is that?
Yeah, the policy certainly wouldn't restrict that.
Okay.
Right.
All right. The second question is about the voting. So voting in terms of being physically present, could they, could we include something that indicates that, something to the effect of absentee type of voting?
Telephone.
Because there's a clause in there in terms of forfeiting your membership if you miss three in a row, but I know that some parents sometimes may need to work, but are full participants, meaning that they're up to date with everything that's happening with the committee and can actually vote, they just physically can't be there that day.
I would say, again, the policy is not, doesn't say either way, but I would note that it says under subsection E, that the local council can adopt bylaws, providing for selection of additional officers in addition to the co-chairs, and addressing such other matters as the council desires, as long as they're not inconsistent with the policy. So, and I think one of the things, you guys have actually looked at like model bylaws, haven't you?
Yes.
That wouldn't, you know, could be proposed as suggestions to the local councils for them to adopt their own bylaws. And the bylaws could certainly say conditions under which you could meet and participate.
Okay, all right.
I don't think there's any state legislative restriction on that.
No, I just want, I'm just asking these questions just for clarification.
No, I'm glad you are.
Yeah. Three more. The third one is related to the budgets. So the councils under, hold on a second, under number three for letter C. Develop and approve the school's annual resource allocation plan in parentheses, budget in support of the school's improvement goals. So my question is, is there a training for the parents in terms of the budget process? Because I remember at one of the budget meetings, we, there was a discussion or a question related to the principals with the student-based budgeting, that if they need additional support, the central office will provide the supports for training. And so the question is, would they be training for the parents in terms of the budget process? And what is the interaction between the parents and the principal in terms of student-based budgeting?
Really, really good question. You know, we are in the process of providing training to our principals, and, you know, this will be really the first year that principals even know what is in their budget. They'll be able to look at it on a monthly basis, know what their balances are. We want our principals to evolve toward being managers of the school's resources and manage those resources wisely. But coming out of the historic pattern that we have been in, we have a long way to go in that. I don't anticipate that as a member of the council, our councils will need training, but I don't anticipate that they will need training in budgeting per se. The principal will present a recommended allocation plan to the council. It's really the council's role to talk about priorities. Are we addressing the things that are in our school improvement plan? Are there things that we would like to accomplish that we've discussed before that are in this budget, or at least we could make a start on in this budget? Are there things in the budget that we don't feel we need? Do we have the proper level of administration? Do, you know, we, I think this is more from a perspective of values and priorities and reflecting the improvement goals of the school than it is through, in any way needing to be trained in how to allocate funds or accounting for them, or, you know, anything like that.
Okay. I would note that there is a requirement that the district provide initial and annual training sessions for all members of the school council and how to do their jobs.
And some of that would be simply in process, process training, and there may be some other sessions that broadly would deal with content. And again, you know, we would look to the councils to help define their needs in that regard as well.
In terms of the hiring process with the council, there's provisions in there for the principal for certified staff. What about the assistant principal? How does that work with the council?
So currently, in all of our schools, we have selection committees that operate when there is a vacancy. It could be the assistant principal, the CSID, it could be a teaching position. All this does is vest that selection committee coming from the School Governance Council. You know that if you're a member of the School Governance Council, you're going to be asked on occasion to participate on a selection committee. Now, if we have a vacancy in the principalship, you know, the responsibility of the central office is to send outstanding candidates to the council. In that situation, you know, we would expect virtually the entire council to be involved in the interview of those candidates, and then make a recommendation for the best fit. It's our responsibility to ensure that everyone who is sent to a council is highly qualified and, you know, can, we have confidence in them to do the job. This is, this is a question of best fit, the chemistry, best match for the school, you know, in the eyes of the parents and staff of the school.
And also, Yvette, the following section five says the council will assist the principal in selection process for teachers and the other certified positions, which would cover the.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that that included the assistant principal.
Absolutely.
Because my concern was, some principals, from my experience, would like to have the authority to hire their own assistant principal, because they work so closely with the assistant principal. And I just wanted to see how that relates to number five, where it said other certified positions.
Well, there it says shall assist.
You're right.
So they're giving advice, but I think the principal would still have the final decision there.
And number five, so besides the parents, where, in terms of attendance, these meetings are open to the public?
Yes.
Yeah, on a practical basis, they're open to all parents in the school.
Thank you. That was my question.
Okay, great. Anything else? All right, here are none. We'll bring this back in two weeks, maybe with a few little tweaks to adjust some of the stuff, particularly at the timing of the elections, and we'll get that out to everybody well in advance of the meeting, so you can see what it looks like.
Dr. Adamowski, as far as the, what I mentioned earlier about the makeup with the diversity of these councils, will that be, Heidi, and you can answer this as well, will that be addressed when it goes back to the policy committee?
You mean previous? You mean this draft that we have now?
Right.
All right. I would hope our goal tonight, which we've been doing tonight, is discussing it, and then possibly our following meeting, which I believe is on the 19th, is to make it as an action item and to move it through.
Okay, so, I mean, will there be, because I heard you, and you did address the, you know, Nathaniel Ely school, but I didn't hear anything in regards to the concern about, you know, these councils not, you know, representing the schools, you know?
So I think there's complete agreement on this point, okay? Everybody wants to ensure that these councils are diverse and representative of all parents in the school. I think the policy committee would appreciate any concrete ideas on how to do that, other than to say in the policy, they shall be or they should be. One of the reasons that the seven parents is important, for example, is that it would be possible, in that scenario, to have a parent representing each grade level, and you would have a greater opportunity for diversity, at least by... And you would, you would have a greater opportunity for diversity, at least by doing that, as opposed to getting several parents from, from the same grade level. We've also talked about, at least I've discussed with the, with the principals, the notion of making sure that there is at least one parent who has a child with special learning needs on the council, at least one parent who has a child who's an English language learner. There's various ways of doing this. I, I think the, you know, kind of the, the line we're trying to walk down here is encouraging it, making sure it happens without getting so prescriptive that it has unintended consequences. So I think at this stage, the, the committee, you know, would appreciate any concrete ideas on how to enforce that, but I can tell you from my discussions with our principals that everyone agrees that this is important, to the extent that there is any perception that we, you know, have a clickish PTO out there somewhere. We don't want a clickish school governance council. We want a broadly representative school governance council, you know, that is duly elected by all the parents in, in the school.
And, and that, that was my, my concern. It's, you know, it's to make sure that every single parent in that school has an opportunity, if they want to, to have a fair, you know, playing field, that, that they might have, you know, the opportunity to sit on that council without it being, like you say, clicky, clicky or something.
And that was what will make these councils strong, their level of diversity and representativeness.
Can I just interject, Mike?
Sure.
Shirley, if I could just add into that. We, I mean, our goal is to have a broad representation of each school, but I would also think that the goal of our principal in each school would get the word out, which I'm hoping that they have, that they want a broad representation reflecting the school culture, the representation of that school. So getting the word out, whether it's flyers, or calling parents, or emails, I mean, that would be, I would believe, also the onus of each principal.
Well, and we wrote the, we wrote in a provision in the selection process to say that while the, you know, the process or parent selection is developed by the principal in collaboration with the, with the parents at the school, the mechanism chosen is subject to the approval of the superintendent. So if, if the mechanism that's chosen at a particular school, you know, Dr. Adamowski feels is not going to be a fair mechanism, he has the right to say, no, you can't use that mechanism, you have to use something that's different, that's going to make, give people better opportunity. You know, we wanted to leave a lot of these decisions to the local schools, but added that language in to make sure that there was a check and balance on it.
So in that regard, during this first year, I think this first year is going to be very important. You know, we mentioned your meeting with the council co-chairs to discuss how things are going. This is certainly one of the issues that you would want to look at in that meeting. I think also, it would behoove us to gather data during the first year on the composition of the councils. We can do that by school and by, and in aggregate, in different categories. You know, it can be race, it can be income, ethnicity, it could be, you know, your child's characteristics, like ELL, special needs, and so on, and actually see how representative they are. And they may not be perfect the first time around, but given the gathering of data, that will ensure they're, they're going to be better and more representative as we, as we go along. But I think, I think, you know, what was said was exactly right. I think this rests, to a large degree, on the leadership of the principal in getting the word out and encouraging all parents to participate in this.
Eric?
Thank you, Chairman Lyons. And this was a concern of mine as well as we moved forward with it. So I, I'm very much appreciative of how we're moving forward with this. And also something that I saw as a fail-safe measure too, in, in what Dr. Adamowski just spoke about, you know, looking at the year one data, the first year, whoever's elected, half of those members are going to be up for reelection the following year. So it does give us the opportunity, you know, or the schools rather, the opportunity to shift around those dynamics, if indeed there is some room for improvement, which we would be able to see from that year one data. So then I would assume it would be at Dr. Adamowski's, you know, decision to discuss with those principals perhaps how to improve their makeup so they have a better representation for the following year with full terms on those individuals. So that was just something I saw as a potential way for us to work with the policy as we move past year one and collecting that data, to even solidify it the following year. And we can always revisit this policy in following years as well, as we see needs that need to, you know, be addressed, especially as if we're starting to, you know, build new schools and change how the schools' compositions are as we introduce potential different inter-district magnets and intra-district magnets. So I just, I like the flexibility of the policy and also our continued commitment to revisit the policy as we've discussed in the policy committee meeting. So thank you for that, Chairman. Chairwoman Keys, I apologize.
I think, Eric, that's a key point though, the end of the year evaluation, to see what's working, what isn't working, what we have to tweak, what we don't need to, if we have to bring it back to policy to look at. So I think that year, end of the year, is really critical and crucial to really look at the data.
Yeah, and the policy right at the end, it requires first, that the Board of Ed has an annual forum with the co-chairs to discuss what's going on, and that the superintendent has to report to the board on their effectiveness. So we're going to get regular updates on what's going on with these things, and that gives us the opportunity to tweak them if we need to. Anything else? All right, so this one will come back in two weeks.
19th, correct.
All right. And Ms. Keys, the 901-0.
Thank you. Chair Lyons, thank you. I'm just going to briefly, this is brief, this is only a paragraph, but we discussed this during our last policy meeting. We unanimously approved this, so we did make an amendment to this policy. We basically had removed the first line, which had stated, "The Board of Education does not exist between meetings." That's the only sentence we removed. What we'd like to put through is, "Board members have no authority except at a board meeting, or when discharging, discharging, I'm sorry, assignment made by the board. Motions duly adopted by majority vote become the expressed will of the board as a whole, regardless of the existence of a minority vote. Under confidential matters, that remains the same. The board members shall not discuss confidential school board business outside of board meetings."
Any comments, questions? Ms. Mosby?
Hi. I'd like to pass this thing out too, could you just pass this around? If you need another one, I have one over here too.
All right.
Now, I wasn't, I, I wasn't at the policy meeting when this was on the agenda, so I'm glad it's here tonight because I want to discuss this. I'm trying to, you know, I'm trying to figure out the purpose of, because with policies within our schools, we're supposed to look at policies and, and determine, you know, what's the best policy for our schools and our district and for our children. And I'm trying to figure out what was the purpose of this change in this, this policy? I mean, who does it benefit? Because as you will see, I've handed you a handouts, and the handouts, basically, it has three, four, yeah, six, six other schools that if the change in a policy was in regards to a certain language, the six other schools have that particular language there. So I'm asking you, Ms. Keys, what, what was the reasoning for this policy at this time to have this change?
Wait, which language? She said this in the other one. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, repeat that again, I apologize.
I'm, I'm asking why at this time, I mean, we, we have numerous of policies that needs to be, you know, looked at and touched, and I'm just trying to get an answer to why this policy here, at this time, there was a need for a change. And, and when you had the policy meeting, how long was, discussion was on this policy? Was there any information that was submitted?
Well, I did present it during our last meeting that unfortunately you had to miss, but it was posted that we were having that as far as our agenda on our meeting. I didn't receive any information from you, said to the policy committee or to anyone else of your concern on this. The last time, the first time it was brought to the board, the bylaw was adapted back in 1985, and then it was reviewed back in 1997. You're talking 18 years, 19 years ago. That first line, "The Board of Education does not exist between meetings," we discussed it as a policy committee, you weren't out, we felt it wasn't necessary to put that language in, but to keep the remaining language in.
But see, my, my question was why at this particular time did you want to sit here and bring this policy to the committee?
We went through, we have a bunch of different policies that are going through our policy committee now, this was one of them. And as policy, policy chair, I felt it was necessary to put this in to our policy committee, discuss it, and to hopefully move it forward and bring it to the full board, which is what we're doing tonight.
I know, again, that still doesn't answer the question. Why at this particular time that you felt that this policy had to be put, and when, when we have a lot of policies that needed to be addressed? Because here, basically, Board of Ed policies needs to, refers to, you know, you know, where, it's a primary, our policy is, is the number one thing that really holds our board together. And if we're, if we're going to go in and, and start to make changes to policies, and we need to find out, who does it benefit? Is this going to be something that's going to benefit the kids, the school, the district, the children? And for this policy out of the blue, just to be put on the agenda, I'm just trying to figure out why, at this time, would this policy be there when we have a lot of policy? Like tonight, we even discussed having a wellness part, a health and wellness policy that could have been, you know, touched. And I'm just trying to figure out the reasoning behind why. Is it, is it because of some language, and, and that's understandable? If that's what you want to take out of one line or something, that's fine, but if it's for something else, because we're not supposed to sit here and basically have it as for our own personal agenda, or catering to certain particular groups, and we're changing and making policies. We're supposed to be open and we're supposed to keep it fair for everyone. And I'm just curious to why would this policy at this time be put on the agenda? And as you can see, I have backup documentation that can show that other schools have the same policy, it's just that their language is a little bit different, where they took out one line, which it doesn't mean anything, but most of them have, board members have no authority, and that's basically what this policy is about.
Well, I'll, I'll address that. The, the language that will remain in this policy does match pretty much what you've pointed out in all of the other policies that you've brought to our attention. Of course, what none of those policies include is the language, "The Board of Education does not exist between meetings." We've been advised by our outside counsel, Tom Mooney, that the language is contrary to state law on the election of Board of Ed members, as well as contrary to our charter. And the reason why it became a topic is because that language was used by the Freedom of Information Commission in a decision which has been widely ridiculed throughout the state by freedom of information advocates, as depriving people of Norwalk of access to public records that would be accessible in any other town that didn't have that language. So to deal with what some of us felt was an undue restriction on the public's rights under the Freedom of Information Act, as well as the fact that our council has advised us that the language in there was contrary to state law, we felt that the language should be removed. So the language that remains is pretty much in conjunction with what you see in these other towns' bylaws.
That's where I'm, I'm going back to, to that, that point there, so that we can make sure that is clear for the record. The Freedom of Information did not base their decision on that particular line in the bylaws. It based it on all the others that these other six different schools that I've, the handouts that I gave you, and that is basically, and I, and in the package, you have the Freedom of Information decision as well, and that's, that's on public, it's on a website, FOI website, and on there, it specifically states exactly what the reason was, and it was not for what you just said. And I just want to make sure it's clear, because we want to make sure that, you know, people get the actual truth out there. And the bottom, the fact is that the Freedom of Information did not rule on this case based on board does not exist. They rule on the case because of the fact that, of power of authority as an individual board member. My question is, why would this have to come to the table for a change? Because that brings concerns to me, that whenever something doesn't go a certain way, are we going to sit here because we're in position of power that we're going to go in and we're going to try to what? Change bylaws, policy, and whatever, because something didn't go your way? Everything here is up a board where the FOI, and they'll tell you that, and there are policies out there, there are several different schools, and there are probably more, but I just only wanted to hand, and just seven, six or seven schools that has the same language that we have, it's just that some of them tweak it a little different, but it means the same thing. It's aligned with the Connecticut State Statute, and it's aligned with other local school boards. And my question is, especially after, there's a comment that was on a particular site saying that, which I gave a copy of that to the board as well, saying that I, I think that this is ridiculous policy or something, and as first chance I get, I'm going to remove it. How can we as board members of a board, dealing with all these people, come in here and bring this type of, you know, biases into the board? I'm, you know, is, is this a lesson that we're trying to teach our kids, or show the, the community, that we can go in, and if we don't like something, because we have a power of position, that we're going to sit there and put it through? Because right here, it says here, "Policy Committee Chair Heidi Keys has agreed to bring this ridiculous part of the 1985 bylaw to the committee so we can delete it from the book." My question, again, going back to you, Heidi, is why would you as policy chair, bring this up and put this out there, just when we have so many pressing items that are out there? I sat at a meeting Saturday, and I see the community and everyone out there crying out for, 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 you know, some help on different things. Why would we bring this? Especially when it's not true that that one line that you're taking out is not going to make a difference? Whether that line was in it or not, the same ruling would have came from the FOI Commission. They would have came down with the same thing, because the bottom line was that there was no public meeting. When someone came to public, came to public comment, asked for a meeting, the meeting was refused. That means that it's no, nothing, zilch. So the bottom line, it's over with. And we should have just put it all behind us and went on, but obvious, we can't seem to do that. And because of that, that is why I am sitting here tonight, because of the action of, of you guys to try to attempt to change these policy practices based on your personal agendas, and, and because you're angry, and catering to special interests and partisan political group, and it's, is, is a reason why I'm telling you that I think that this entire board needs to go through some training of understanding bylaws, policies that are, that are aligned with the Connecticut State Statute, state board practices, bylaws, processes, procedures, and policies that should be consistent and aligned with all local boards in the state of Connecticut. And included with that type of training is training that includes diversity, cultural sensitivity, inclusive training, community-public relation, engagement, outreach to gain an understanding of diversity and inclusion within our diverse community. I think that once we as board, we are the board, we are supposed to set the example for our people, our children, our community, but if we keep going on with this, with these petty stuff like this, when obvious, if you go to the FOIC, you'll see what they said, their ruling does not say that one line, board members, does not, board does not exist between. It's definitely states because of the authority. I did not have the authority, because we did not make this a public meeting, because the, you, the chair refused to make this one. So until it, until it becomes one, we can't do that. And then if we do that, that means that you're stepping on my individual, private, citizen rights. I have rights like everyone else. So I'm just concerned that if we can sit here and just get with each other and decide because we don't like something, because we in a power of position, and change policy, this is just a small policy. This is, you know, it's, it's, it means, it's tiny. But I'm concerned that when the bigger problems come in, when parents, adults comes out and they have a problem, and they come in with a policy, and that policy basically, you know, it, it, they, they find towards their favor, that we decide that, oh... know, they find towards their favor, that we decide that, oh, I don't like it, I'm going to change it, and then we're just going to go in. It didn't really have too much of community input. We just went in, had a meeting, I bet you it was probably no more than 10 minutes on the subject, and that's it. And then we're going to sit and change a policy. We cannot play around with policies of the Board of Ed like that. We can't. Whether you like a person or not, we have to put the policy, put these children up front. And that's why I'm asking for this board to have some training in those areas that I mentioned, and it should be mandatory. Because we need to all get on the same page in order to make this district move forward, or else we're going to have problems. Because we got the community out there that are upset, and half of them are divided at this point. And we need to figure out some way of trying to pull it together, instead of playing these little childish games of going back and forth with this.
Want to answer that, or just move on?
I'd just like to answer that briefly. Surely, it's unfortunate you couldn't make our last meeting, which we discussed this. I'm not sure why you couldn't make it. That's your own personal prerogative, but...
Because you kept changing the time.
Then you can easily, and I'm not going to argue, I'm not here to argue. You have my cellphone, you have my Norwalk Public Schools website address, you can easily email me. We're all civil here, we all want to talk, we all want to have a conversation. We've been working in the past couple months, and you might have missed some meetings, School Governance Council. That's been number one on our list as a policy committee. I'm very easily, you can ask any member here, contact me anytime on my cell, and I'm available, and I'll get back to you. And I take offense when you mention power. I'm not here as a person in power. I'm here to make the right decisions, work as a group in policy. If you were at our last policy meeting, you could have discussed this, and voiced your concern, and being upset, or you might have been angry, whatever it may have been, you could have voiced that during our last meeting. It was public knowledge, we're having a policy committee meeting, we have it the first of every month on a Tuesday, public is welcome. I mention that during every single meeting. We've been busy, as I mentioned, Stu Governance Council, that's taken up many, many months. I didn't look at this particular policy and say, I've got to have it this time. We have a lot of policies down the pike that we have to work on. We had attendance, we had people coming in tonight that went through curriculum tonight, went through curriculum prior, came to policy. We had almost a 40-minute meeting discussing attendance and block scheduling. We had two representatives from Brian McMahon and Norwalk High School. We had Lisa Linscolt coming tonight and talking about wellness and nutrition, which was critical. So we have very busy agendas. Especially if you come to our meetings, you'll know what we have going on in policy. And we try to get it all discussed, we try to take our time on it, we move it as a policy, we approve it, which we did for this amendment, we bring it to the full board for discussion, and then action on the following meeting. It's always been like that, and I'm sure it will continue to be like that. Mr. Anderson, or Mr. Lyons, if you're...
Yes, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just did want to comment on this as a member of the policy committee. When this was brought forward to us, there was already a great deal of discussion with the board in our executive sessions, and also in, with, just in general conversations with Attorney Mooney on this topic. So when it was brought to us, the discussion was limited, as it was presented to me, as I was not a part of the prior conversations that have been listed in this packet of information here, that it was very clear-cut. It was an extraneous bit of information that did not exist in any other policies, nor did it change the overall meeting. However, it's something that could be misconstrued by the public, which I think it was in this case. As you stated, Ms. Mosby, the decisioning wasn't made by that wording. But I think a lot of the uproar was. So when I voted to remove this policy, it was in the understanding of cleaning up the language. It doesn't diminish what the policy says. It does remove a bit of information that definitely caused a lot of confusion and upset many individuals incorrectly, as you have pointed out in your ruling here. So I was in favor of it, especially after hearing from Attorney Mooney and his decisioning on why it should be removed. So I did need to put that into the conversation.
Thank you.
And to go back, one more, and to go back to the question that first started out, why at this time, when we have all this stuff, you said we have the school governance, we have all these things, why at this time are we going to look at this? Are we going to cater to certain type of special interests and partisan political groups? Are we going to act as a board? And that was my question. And I'm sorry, as chair, and which I have to say that, Eval, you are chair of your policy, and I have to say that I've, your style and everything is wonderful, because you're being inclusive, and you're making sure that everyone is involved, and that's great now, and I would have to commend you on that. But I'm just saying that, at this time, do we need that, when you know that the community out there is upset about a lot of different things, there's the divisiveness that's out there, and we can't seem to bring each other together? Now, I'm okay to overlook this, and if you want to take that one line out, you can do what you want with that one line. Because like I said, that misinformation and half-truth was not the reason why the FOI Commission made that decision. So as long as we got that correct. Although, I don't respond to these type of blogs and whatever, because I take integrity in the sense that I will not go out there and put my name out there when I'm trying to set an example for children, and so that they won't sit there and result to cyberbullying. I try not to do that. And that's why you don't see me responding. But I'm responding tonight, because when you start to affect policies that can change the lives of children, and that deals with our children in this community, that's when I'm going to speak up. So I'm hoping that we can at least look into some training for this board, so that we can start moving forward and doing something productive with this board, and start trying to heal what's out there. Because at that meeting Saturday that I went to, there are a lot of people out there that are angry and upset. And it's not just because of just a color issue, it's because of everything. People are feeling left out, are not involved. That's why I asked for the sensitivity meeting with dealing with culture, with community outreach, and all that stuff, as well as us understanding what the bylaws and policies are. Because we have to know what our Connecticut State Statues and our bylaws and policies are, and that what our local school boards are all aligned with. And that's what I'm saying. So you can sit there and put whatever spend you want on, whatever, this was not the appropriate time to bring this policy up, unless we're going to get out there and try to get some type of training, and so that we can sit there and move this district forward, or else we're going to go further in the ditch. Because I'm out there, I hear the people, they're not happy, and I'm sorry if you don't like what I'm saying, that's just, you know, that's just the way it is. And we have to, especially with people in power of position, if you're going to sit here and decide that you're going to sit here and make changes, especially to policies on a whim, because you're angry and whatever, and basically, it's there inviting that, you know, I'm going to remove this ridiculous, and Heidi, you know, you agreed to it. You're the policy chair. You're the policy chair.
I'm going to speak now. Can I speak?
Okay, all right, wait a second, hold it. Now, I don't usually enforce these rules, but our rules allow people to talk two times on any item in front of the board. And I've already let people speak well in excess of that, and, you know, I'm going to, no, I'm going to cut off this discussion now, we're going to move forward with the substance of the meeting.
Mike, you don't have to, because I'm going to be leaving this meeting right now, because, as I said, I asked for training for this board. I'm asking one more time, please, this board needs training. So I'm going to leave, so you can run the board the way you want to run it. So thank you.
All right, we'll move on now to the work session. Mandatory summer school, summer learning. Michael Connor, Patricia Foley, and Anthony Allison, over to you, Dr. Adamowski.
Okay, we have a, we have an important discussion tonight, really in two parts. Mandatory summer school, and then summer learning. I'm going to ask Dr. Connor, Patricia Foley, and I think Janine Goss is in the first round of this as well, to come up. And the first discussion is around the strengthening of mandatory summer school. Now, as they come up, I want to just give the board a little background on this, and historical backstory. For the last six or seven years, our State Board of Education has required that students who are substantially below the DIBELS benchmark in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and third grade, participate in summer school, in summer learning. Now, you'll see from the materials that you have in front of you that there's a benchmark for the DIBELS. For example, in first grade, it's 47, you're below the benchmark if you're 32 to 46, and you're well below the benchmark, 0 to 31. So it's that well below the benchmark that is of concern, and where we have a responsibility to provide students with additional support in the form of summer school and summer learning. This is the ultimate tier-three intervention, where, you know, you provide an adult, you provide additional time, and this interfaces with the issue of regression in learning during the summer. If you can limit breaks to three weeks, you can defeat regression. You have a student go all summer, particularly those who are the neediest learners, their gap simply increases. So this is a very important area. Now, in the past, the district did adhere to the state regulation of offering the summer school. However, it was done in three central locations, and I think it can be certainly stated, based upon those that were involved in this, is that it was less than effective. We do have research that suggests that a student who has summer school in their own school, with their own teachers, in their program that they're in, simply does better. And we, the data that we have from the prior model, while it did conform to state regulation, suggests that there was very little gain on the part of students in participating. So the presentation tonight involves a plan that I asked Dr. Connor to develop around how can our summer school be more effective in helping those students who are the lowest performing in reading become proficient readers and meet the benchmark by the end of third grade. So, Michael, if you could review that with us, I know you have a presentation that the audience can also follow.
All right, thank you, Dr. Adamowski. And this has been one of the most invigorating projects that I've been a part of in regards to the intentionality with the design of the actual summer school program, but more importantly, using this as a leverage lever to really close the achievement gap with our students that are pretty much identified within the tier-three sector with that. So the first slide is called "The Strands of Early Literacy Development," but metaphorically, within the state regarding our literacy experts, as well as consortium, and many stakeholders that work at the State Department of Education uses this as what they call the braid. And the braid is pretty much looking at two specific domains, the language comprehension and word recognition. And as you get, or go through the grades from K-1, 2, and 3, you see the braid comes closer, comes tighter. And that, the rationale for that is because language comprehension and word recognition and the specific subset skills that are embedded within that, they work in unison, or they work in an interface with one another. So our focus within the actual design of the program is going to be how we're able to create a balanced approach using the language comprehension subset skills, as well as word recognition subset skills, to create this program to address the discrete skills where we see where our identified gaps are. So our measurable, our measurable goals that we identified for this program, and the logistics and pragmatics that Ms. Goss, as well as Ms. Foley will go into, is to accelerate the core literacy skills, phonemic segmentation, which Ms. Goss will get in depth with, that is identified as one of the target pre, excuse me, kindergarten subset skills, and then oral reading fluency, which is for grades 1 through 3. Also, too, to close the external and the internal achievement gap that we're seeing with our students that are identified for the Norwalk Summer School Academy, especially within the populations of the high-needs subgroups. Our design is, like I said from the outset, is very intentional, and it's robust, and some of the design features and program structures, the program is aligned to the Common Core State standards, both literary and informational standards, as well as the foundational skills that are embedded within the standards. And our practitioners who are going to be involved within the actual summer school will be trained with the ELA instructional shifts, and there's three shifts, not going to go in depth with those, but we're going to be able to unpack that to be able to deliver the professional development that's going to be aligned to that. Also, as Dr. Adamowski has stated from the outset, is that the summer school program is going to be site-based, so all 12 elementary schools will be a part of this, using their host teachers as well as their instructional leaders. Anthony Allison, as well as Ralph Valenzese, will be following this in regards to the collective impact work. And I'd like to say that we are partnership, or we're partnering with Literacy Howe, the Steppenstone's Museum, as well as Norwalk Axe, to be able to really have this collective impact around this tier-three structure, to be able to close the internal and the external achievement gap. One thing I'm also excited about is this three-day summer institute for teachers, to be able to provide them with the necessary capacity, as well as capital, to be able to close the achievement gap using evidence-based instructional practices, as well as methods to be able to address the discrete skills for our students. Ms. Goss will be able to go in depth with this, but we are infusing a small group instructional rotation, or what we call station, in educational terms, the station rotation model, where there will be small group instruction coupled with an adaptive intelligence software to be able to get at the specific skills for the students. Also new, that's a part of this design process, is that there will be a 90-minute data meeting every Thursday with our practitioners, using both qualitative and quantitative metrics to be able to set specific instructional focuses for that next week. Ms. Goss will be able to go in depth with that as well. And when we talk about creating that overlay with language comprehension, as well as word recognition, there will be a component that addresses the comprehension piece through STEAM authentic performance tasks. And that's more in the lines of a competency-based demonstration task, where students are applying the specific discrete skills that they're learning within this small group rotation, and being able to apply it in a specific way. And also adhering to the State Department of Education's retention policy. This is something that has been loosely done in Norwalk in the past, but this year, we're really going to adhere to it. If students qualify for our Norwalk Summer Academy, they are mandated by state law to be able to attend this academy. If they choose not to go to this academy, they will be automatically retained. Also, if students miss a certain percentage of the summer school, as well as absences, they are liable to be retained per state policy. So in regards to this, students that are falling in this tier-three sector, they have to go, because that's how the achievement gap exacerbates itself. If they don't attend, they're still getting further behind. So this is a great opportunity, not only to be able to close the achievement gap, but as Dr. Adamowski has been saying, we're really creating the summer, prevents the summer learning regression, and providing year-round school for students that specifically need the support.
Yeah, good evening. So I'm going to talk in depth a little bit about some of the really important components that Dr. Connor just mentioned. We have a very unique instructional model, small group instruction being one of them. Dr. Connor mentioned that would be 60 minutes per day. The purpose of the small group instructional model is to meet students where they are. It's to meet them at their zone of proximal development. So in other words, the teachers are engaging students in the instruction and in practices that are not too hard, nor are they too easy, presents the right amount of challenge for students during that small group time. So the teachers will provide that direct instruction for 20 minutes, then the students would engage in a web-based adaptive technology program called Alexia Core 5, where again, they will be practicing some of the skills that have been identified as areas of weaknesses, excuse me, for the students. And then for the last 20 minutes, the students would be developing a sense of autonomy and a sense of dependence as they continue to practice on follow-through activities that the teachers provide for them. The second one up there is the whole group instruction. That is extremely, extremely critical, and that's where the teacher works with the students on structured read-alouds and shared reading activities to provide access to grade-level Common Core ELA content. That's the purpose of the whole group instruction, okay? That is where student discourse will be apparent, high levels of meaning-making, and the teacher strategically uses text-dependent questions to ensure that that student conversation is happening, okay? The last up there that Dr. Connor mentioned was the performance task. This is where students will be engaged in a series of weekly, authentic, problem-solving challenges. We're going to use the rainforest as a theme this year. And so students will be developing background knowledge, they will be developing vocabulary, they will be working with their peers, using 21st century skills such as communication, collaboration, as well as STEAM skills of science, technology, engineering arts, as well as mathematics. So it's an integrated approach. They're actually going to be problem-solving around areas... They're actually going to be problem-solving around areas of transportation, conservation, geography, communication. And I have to say, Steppenstone's and Literacy How has been instrumental in planning for this, for this experience for children.
Pete, before you move off this slide, can you give the board information on the ratio, the student-teacher ratio?
So in every classroom, there will be one teacher and one teacher assistant with 15 to 18 students. It's a nice, small student-teacher ratio. So I'm going to show you something broad right now. Dr. Adamowski alluded to this. We use many different kinds of data in order to inform our instruction. And the state has identified priority measures. And if you look at that very top row, from kindergarten all the way to grade 3, the state has identified the phoneme segmentation fluency measure as the measure that is a priority. And the reason it's a priority is because it is highly predictive of students' reading success. So we have to make sure that we're paying attention to the students' ability, and I'll get into more detail in the next slide, as to what that looks like, okay? In grades 1, 2, and 3, the state recognizes that the priority is the DIBBLES oral reading fluency measure. And it says up there, "The dorff words correct." That is also an indicator of reading competence, so we have to pay attention to those scores as well, okay? So let's look also at the next two rows. Not only are we paying attention to the priority skills that the state has outlined for us, but we are looking also at some of the other data that we collect on students. The nonsense word fluency measure, the student's level of accuracy, as well as that composite score, which is the overall score of all measures that students are administered. Okay? So now we're going to take a look at specifically kindergarten. Thank you. Okay. So as I mentioned before, the state recognizes that the priority is the phoneme segmentation fluency measure. And if you notice there, I put an example, this is an auditory assessment. The teacher says a word, and the student gets points when they segment the sounds. So if the teacher says "sir," the student says "sir." Okay? And they get points for the number of sounds they can represent. What we're looking at here is that well-below benchmark score. If students in kindergarten score below 25 sounds, that tells us they are in that substantially deficient range, well below benchmark. And the reason that is so concerning is because that means students only have a 10% to 20% chance of reaching further reading outcomes later on, so we need to intervene, okay? Take a look at the number in green, our benchmark is 40. All that tells us is, yes, the student has reached the benchmark, if they're 40 or greater, if they've scored a 40 or greater, I should say, they have an 80% to 90% chance of reaching the next benchmark with good core instruction. I want to direct your attention to the below-benchmark range, the one in the middle. This is where it becomes difficult, because it is less predictive. So we have to make sure that although we're requiring students to attend when they're in that below-benchmark range, if they fall in, I'm sorry, in the well-below benchmark range, if they fall in the below-benchmark range, we're going to invite them to attend. We're going to encourage them to attend, because again, it's less predictive when they're in that range, okay? Let's look at grade 1. Grade 1 assessment that the state considers a priority is the DIBBLES oral reading fluency measure. I'm going to show you what that looks like right now, so Ms. Foley, if you can just forward 1. This is what the teacher sees, the student sees a clean copy. It is a grade-level passage. In fact, students get to look at three grade-level passages. They read them, and the computer computes the number of words the student is able to read accurately, okay? I'm sorry, correctly, yes, correctly. And what happens is, the computer throws out the highest score, and the computer throws out the lowest score, and it keeps the median score. That becomes the student's oral reading fluency score, okay? Can you go back just 1? So in first grade, if they are scoring below 32 words per minute, that's considered in the well-below benchmark range. Those students, it would be mandatory for them to attend summer school. The benchmark would be 47. Remember, that means that they have an 80% to 90% chance of reaching the next benchmark and achieving further reading outcomes with good core instruction. And once again, that below-benchmark range of 32 to 46 means it's less predictive. So we want to be safe, we want to make sure we're providing that support for students that need it, so we would invite them. Let's look at grade 2.
So it's truly a medical model approach of how we're being able to diagnose some of these core deficiencies and be able to prescribe specific instructional strategies or interventions to be able to intervene early to get them back on track.
Okay, so for grade 2, students are presented with three passages at the grade 2 level. The median score is recorded. If the median score is below 65, that is considered in the well-below benchmark range. Those students need to attend summer school, it becomes mandatory. The benchmark is 87. Anything in between that means we would invite them, we would provide that additional support for them and encourage them to attend. And in grade 3, it's the same idea. The benchmark is 100, when students are presented with grade 3 level text. Anything below 80 would be in the well-below benchmark range, okay? So those certain benchmarks, we track those all year long. And in between our beginning of the year, our middle of the year, and our end-of-year assessments, teachers are progress monitoring along the way, so that we can ensure that students are on the correct trajectory and that they are closing the gap. So in looking again at some of the other measures, we not only will just look at those priority measures, we know that also important in kindergarten is that nonsense word fluency measure. So students are presented with words such as "bip," okay? They're silly words, nonsense words. Students get points for identifying the sounds that those letters represent. They would say "buh," "if." They would get 3 points for that, okay? Eventually, when they get to first grade, you see nonsense words up there as well. Eventually, we want them to start blending those sounds. So we also take into account those scores for the correct letter sounds in kindergarten, as well as the whole words read in first grade. Also, in first grade, we look at their accuracy rate, because here's the thing, students could read 100 words in a minute, but if they're not accurate, what's the use of being fluent? So that's why we're saying, even though they're fluent, and they may look like they're at benchmark, we need to offer them summer school, because obviously, we have things to work on, okay? We also take that into account. Grades 2 and 3, the exact same thing. And at all those grade levels, we also look at the composite score, which also includes some comprehension measures, okay? I'm going to quickly go through the structure of the day. This is very exciting. When students arrive, they meet with the teachers, and they go over the expectations for the day, the overview, the theme, what's going to be happening that day, just for a few minutes. We move right into whole group instruction, that would be about 25 minutes of structured read-aloud. And every time that read-aloud is done, day after day, it is reread for a different purpose, okay? Moving into small group instruction for 60 minutes, where those students are rotating through those three rotations, 20 minutes for each. And this was another piece that we haven't mentioned yet. Usually, when children are working independently, they're reading, okay? And that, yes, will still happen. But we also embedded another 20 minutes dedicated just to independent reading, because we want the teacher available to be able to confer with the students while they're reading. So collect that qualitative data, collect that anecdotal data, so this way, they can discuss the reading with the children. And both the teacher and the teacher assistant would be able to do that during that time. After that, we have about 35 minutes dedicated to that authentic performance task. And then we end the day the same way we started. We end the day together as a community, with closing activities and reflection of how the day's events went, okay? Last but not least, if we look at the next slide, we are working three days this summer to prepare teachers and the teacher assistants with all of the different components that they will be embedding in summer school. Day 1 would concentrate on certain things, also on student data and groupings, okay? We're going to group children in, as homogeneously grouped, wait, let me say that again, we're going to group children in homogeneous groups, because we only have five weeks, and we want to make sure students' needs are met. So we want to make sure that they are with students who have similar needs, okay? Day 2 would be spent going over the small group instruction, as well as the Lexia Core 5, in order to learn how to interpret that data. And then day 3, we're going to talk about the data team structures. Dr. Connor mentioned that every Thursday, there's going to be 90 minutes dedicated to the data teams. And there's going to be a particular structure, so this way, we're all talking the same language, we're evaluating using a variety of tools, and making sure we're making really good decisions and informing our instruction on a daily basis. On that last day, the principals will go back to their schools with the teachers in order to have their staff meeting there and to settle. So Ms. Foley's going to talk now, now.
I'm going to talk about the money, the budget lady. That's what I'm known of.
Just before Patty gets started, I just want to point out, and I think the board already knows, there are no local dollars allotted for this whatsoever, and have not been, and are not in the current budget, although in the future, we would like to do that and expand upon this. But right now, this is a pure grant-funded operation, which is why we need our grant funds for their intended purposes, because this is an important one.
Just to run through this, you can see I've outlined in general terms the expenses. You'll notice that technology is no cost, and that's because having summer school at each of the individual schools, they have enough licenses already there for all the technology, the Lexia. So when it was at three schools last year, they actually had to buy additional licenses. So that is a perk of doing it this way. You can see the, a few independent textbooks, and then the training and the materials, that's through Literacy How. They're doing all the training for the three days, and they're doing, providing all the materials, so that's in that. There's a couple of costs, breakfast and lunch, that, there'll be two start times, depending on, there'll be an early run for seven schools and a little bit later for the other five. So the earliest schools will get breakfast, and the schools, the kids that come a little bit later will get lunch after summer school's over, so those prices still have to be factored in, but they're within the budget. We'll have two district-wide nurses at this point, in order to service the kids who have specific needs and need a nurse. When we have the exact, when we know the kids exactly that will be attending, we will look at any specific needs to be sure that a nurse will be there, should that be the case. And then you see the cost for transportation. So basically, those are the costs, and then we are supporting it through a summer school grant that we have, some priority school district money, and then through our federal grant, our Title I, we are able to use funds for a district-wide summer school program off the top. So that's how we're able to meet the needs of our summer school.
Last page.
And the last slide, oh, yeah, the last slide's in there right now, just gives you the numbers of kids currently identified as needing to attend. We're hoping that number goes down a little bit when we get year-end data, but these kids are being prepared for, should they need to attend, the number of teachers and the number of aides.
And these are all the substantially below, or does this include?
This includes.
Right.
This includes the yellow.
This includes our students that fall in the yellow domain or the quadrant, so we ex-
Or recommending.
That we're recommending, right. So you'll see the numbers significantly decrease by the EOI administration of the DIBBLES. Ms. Goss and I, we actually did an analysis today of one school, and we actually saw the percentage drop, based off the progress monitoring data, 12%. So that roughly equates about 20, 25 students, about with the 12%. Yeah, so we're looking at the numbers to significantly drop. Hopefully, hypothesizing, it'll be roughly between, at least about 5 to, about 500 to 600 students total.
Seems to me that the instructional model here seems to match what you've talked about doing in the whole school system with, you know, deterred interventions.
Absolutely.
This is a good first step into that.
Consistency.
Into that pool.
Were there questions? So we just want you to be aware of this, and, because I'm sure you'll be hearing about it.
All right.
I really like this, really good work. I'm going to ask a question, I kind of oversimplify things. So if there's a kid in kindergarten and he can't say "bip" after 10 months, we're going to throw him in summer school. Do you think there's more of a problem than just summer school? Do you want to tap later?
Sure.
I mean, either word.
So it's really important, like I said, between the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year, that we are constantly progress monitoring, okay? So if they can't say "bip," that's not the issue. The issue is a more deeper issue. And so we have to go backwards, and we have to kind of turn over every single rock to make sure we are seeing exactly what the root of the issue is. And we do that through diagnostic testing. The assessments that the state has identified as those priority measures are kind of those bottom-line measures. It doesn't mean that's the issue. It means we have to use diagnostic measures to look further, and we've got to address those weaknesses where the child can actually read a three-letter word.
And we have those measures in place?
We do have those measures in place, absolutely.
Right.
Thank you.
Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much for the presentation. This really does look like a fantastic program. I just had a little bit of a clarification point on the numbers that are presented on the board as of now. Do we have a breakdown of which of those are the well below and which are the below?
Yes, we have an aggregate analysis and a disaggregated analysis. We can forward it to the board.
I'd be curious to see the segregated.
By students, absolutely.
Yes, that would be fantastic. Yeah, just so that way, we can kind of look, and for me personally, I'd like to know where the severity lies, because I want to make sure that we address those with extreme, you know, importance.
Absolutely.
Being able to make sure we can look at the schools on an individual basis in those cases, too.
Get those students.
Thank you so much, Dr. Connor.
So the request, then, would be for this chart disaggregated by school.
Yes.
Substantially below and below.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, you can get that to Maura, and she would send it out to the board.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I just want to add a quick comment. I hope we can get the funds for this, because this seems like a really comprehensive program for the summer, for these children, or at most, risk students that would really benefit from this. I like the idea of the PD, the professional development, the training for teachers along with the teaching assistants, because if they're working in small groups, they're basically going to co-teaching and working together hand-in-hand, they're going to need that kind of training. So they're both on the same level as far as teaching and working with these students. And again, the small group instruction, I think, is critical. And how you had outlined, the beginning of the day versus the end of the day, seems like it's very similar to a regular day, so I don't think it would be confusing for the students coming in for the summer. So I think there's a continuity as far as what they're learning during the school year versus the summer, it just seems like it's more concrete and more comprehensive.
We're hoping, Heidi, that we're able to accelerate the specific skill, sub skills, within the small group instruction, because the intentionality behind it is that 1 to 5, 1 to 6 ratio, and students engaging in three to four different rotations that are very targeted and very prescriptive towards the skill that, you know, I already have mentioned in regards to, if students can't get this, then how are we able to go back to, able to address that?
And it's like the beginning, middle, like beginning, middle, and end sound, so they have that conquered, and they can move on. But having that rotation, that small group instruction, and having a teacher with a teaching assistant, I think will make a huge difference during that period in the summer.
Any other comments, questions? All right, thank you very much.
My companion, Jeanine, thank you. So, this is important, great work, but it is one small element of summer learning. It will affect only children in grades K through 3, and only the lowest-performing students in grade through 3. Summer learning in itself is a much broader concept, and something that really every student who is striving to improve their academic work needs to some degree. To that extent, that has been identified as one of the top priorities of Norwalk Acts. And Ralph and Anthony Allison are here tonight to try to give you an overview of the bigger picture, because what we hope you see is, through the work we are doing on the mandatory summer school, given the big picture of what is going to be necessary and required ultimately, we want you to see these different programs and additions as steps towards the vision of where we need and want to be in the future.
Definitely. And good evening, everybody. Just a couple of comments before Anthony takes this over and-
Just a couple of comments before Anthony takes us over and talks a little bit more about the summer programs that we have in place. I wanted to start off by talking about our goal six in our strategic operating plan addresses partnerships. And just like Dr. Adamowski was saying, one of the things we're doing is making sure that we develop an alignment between our goals and strategies with our partners. This, tonight, is going to give you an example of this type of work, of actually aligning our summer school programs and our summer learning with our partners. Tonight's presentation is really to briefly describe the strategy of bringing summer program providers together to develop a robust summer learning experience for all of our students. And one last comment, too, is that Anthony is going to be explaining, as Dr. Connor had mentioned, a definition for you of collective impact. This is really the premise of what Norwalk Acts does, the work that they do with us, which allows us as a whole community to meet the needs of our students. So if you can keep that in mind as we go through this, and I'll, Anthony, take over.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening.
Anthony?
And thank you for the opportunity. As we just heard in the previous presentation, which was just fantastic, what we've been able to identify and what we know about, you can go to the next slide, Ralph, what we know about summer learning is that the loss is that it's real, right? It exists. And it's not, and it's something that we have been able to speak to over, you know, many years in Norwalk, but we haven't been very intentional about being able to address it. And you saw a lot of great data that the district has available to them to make very important decisions in support of those children. One thing that we don't have right now is the best data for our community partners to identify the needs of the students that they have. What we know about summer learning loss, and I'm sure all of you are aware of this, is that, you know, as it says up on the page, up on the board there, it's well documented that young people experience learning loss when they do not engage in educational enrichment activities. More than half of the achievement gap between lower and higher income youth can be attributed to unequal access to summer opportunities. There are far too many children without access to quality summer learning experiences. Research has shown that students who engage in summer programming have better outcomes than similar peers who do not, and that high-quality summer academic enrichment programs have the potential to stop disproportionate and cumulative summer loss. And that's a really important thing to remember, that this is cumulative and it's disproportionate. Cumulative in that it will, you will build on the loss of your learning over periods of, over many years of lack of access, and that it is disproportionate between low and lower-income and high-income children. And so within Norwalk right now, we have roughly 20 to 25 providers of summer learning, the district being number one. We serve roughly 3,000 to 3,500 youth during the summertime, roughly. Right now, Norwalk Acts is engaged in doing a summer learning scan of all of the providers, and that data will be available after the 30th of April, or on the 30th of April. So all of the board will have that information about where we stand as a community. But using the collective impact, the principles of collective impact, we have engaged all of our providers in a beginning session around a call to action for summer learning for the city of Norwalk. The purpose of this is to alert the community to what summer learning loss actually is and that there is an opportunity to stop it, that we want to inform parents of what they can do to support their children as they move forward during the summer months. So using the collective impact approach, we have, again, we've convened all of our providers. They have agreed to the basic principles to develop a summer learning alliance here in Norwalk. And what that will afford us is the opportunity for them to make, you know, follow through on these five conditions around a shared agenda, which is to provide more opportunity and to serve more children better in summer learning opportunities. The second is to really work on the measurements that we, that the providers collectively agree upon are the right measures. You heard in the previous presentation around the DIBELS scores, that right now, we have providers in summer learning programs that are, like, for instance, with Lexia. We only have one summer provider who works with Lexia. We have them working with a myriad of different ones. Why can't we align with what the district is working with Lexia Pro and provide that opportunity for the other programs so that they have a better opportunity to align with what the district is doing? Just, you know, just fairly logical, if you will. But I see that across the board with all of our providers. They're working with all sorts of different types of programs that potentially, it might be better to align with what the district is actually doing. Mutually reinforcing activities, continuous communication, and backbone support. So that's where the thinking is. We move into what that actually looks like to develop that partnership, and that's on that slide right there. It's important that all of those outside bubbles, there are your CPOs, your district, private providers, city, and investors are all in agreement around those five principles of collective impact. That is the critical crux of this. Right now, I can honestly say that they are. They're in agreement of the importance of this work. I can't say around the metrics yet, but they'll come to that. But in terms of the importance of this, to build this partnership, they're absolutely in agreement with that. And the strategic approach is that we will build this summer learning alliance. And the reason why that is, is that we can identify and advance high-impact and innovative summer learning strategies within Norwalk that already exist. We can increase the number of Norwalk's youth that are provided with high-quality summer learning opportunities. We want to be able to define and align common quality measures. All right, now, all programs are not equal in terms of what they are assessing and how they're addressing the summer needs of the young people that they work with. We want to broker partnerships, mobilize and leverage relationships. The ability to have this alliance and follow the collective impact principles allows us as a community to work with all those collective partners, and in particular, with investors who have a very keen interest in providing the type of support necessary to impact children during the summertime. And then through this alliance, we can scale up best practice, provide training, professional development, and technical assistance. Again, if you think about the previous presentation, all five of those were mentioned. And how do we align our community partners with the opportunities that the district is providing on that level? Measurements for quality improvement. These will be established by the providers working with other, you know, professionals and research to develop those student-level outcomes that we want, measurement outcomes that we want to be able to have. Right now, again, as I said earlier, if you go to most programs, they don't have a system like this, and this is not a criticism whatsoever. We just haven't gone, we haven't matured a lot. There's certain programs that do have some, but most do not. So we want to be able to, the measurement objectives are around, you know, student level. We want to look at the program level, between programs, and citywide. So the citywide piece to spotlight examples of excellence and draw attention to access and quality gaps. And if we work with all of our partners to define, align, and advance common measures of high quality, these are just some of potential areas that we will be looking at. Attendance, differentiated instruction, as we heard about earlier, smaller class size, high-quality instruction and staffing, aligned school year and summer curricula, engaging in rigorous programming, et cetera. One of the things that we also want to speak to within this is that this looks, you know, fairly academic, right, in our thinking right here. Right now, I would say that we have four programs in the city that are intentional around academic support. I'm going to take the district out right now. Four programs. They serve maybe 900 kids. So it is not solely intentional around academics. The vast majority of it is much more in the summer learning or enrichment programmatically. So we have a real lack of programming that's supporting academics and/or direct intervention from our community providers. And that's something that, through the scan work that we're doing right now, we've been able to identify. The value-add for Norwalk's children, most importantly, by building this alliance. We've been doing quite a bit of research, and Boston, Providence, and Rochester have become three communities that are, have really shown significant gains in the work that they've done. Providence and Boston, we've visited just in the last two months. We were just in Boston a few weeks ago to work with Boston After School and Beyond. And they really have been able to do an exemplary work around their alignment, A, with their school district, but by building this alliance, they've been able to do, hit all of those bullet points on there. The other communities have done that as well. Rochester has something also very interesting when you were dealing with the budget issue around your summer programming. They have a very interesting diversified funding model. And there's two pieces in it, and I won't go into great deal detail with it, because I'm sure we could get into a long discussion about it. But the Rochester School District believes so much in the development of that alliance, and they saw the value for the students during the summertime and how that affected and impacted positively their school year. They decided to invest for five years, $500 per student to participate in summer learning and to provide all transportation for summer learning for five years. Now, they worked with a very interesting model for diversified funding, but that chart earlier that showed all of the different folks that had skin in the game, they all had skin in the game to make that happen. I would certainly hope that we could move in that direction as a community, because I've, we need it. And there's traction and momentum. So right now, I spoke to the scan that'll be available right around the 30th. We're researching and convening stakeholders. That's multiple, multiple partners, as I spoke to in that, in our infographic. We have our call to action. All of you are in the Norwalk Acts email blast. Does everybody get our Norwalk Acts email?
Yeah.
Which is good. Glad to hear that. We have a call to action symposium on April 30th at N C C. So the folks from Rochester, Boston, and Providence will be there, along with the National Summer Learning Alliance. They will be speaking to best practice, how the alliance and those communities have benefited their, children of their communities. We will have investors speaking to the role that they want to play in supporting impact on summer learning. So it is our first big body of work. All of our providers in Norwalk will be there, and we will move forward with, from that symposium into the spring, with the next phase, which will be a commitment to action. And then during the summertime, we will be doing quite a bit of work around data collection and analysis of our programming based upon the metrics that you saw earlier. And we will have a full report on all of that work in the fall of 2016. So what we can do this summer, I spoke to briefly, just complete the scan. We want to define, solidify, and advance common measures of quality. The providers working with us and the district will really look at that and be able to do that. We want to provide a much more comprehensive way of data collection and system building in Norwalk. And like I said, we'll be doing site visits and mobilizing partners. What's next, you know, it takes us in throughout the school year, reports to the community, and then it's really, you know, summer planning begins in September, right? So we want to really, really hone in on what we want to be able to do in 2017. One of the key things that we're finding out from the scan right now is that we don't have the capacity as a community to meet the need of, needs of families. Even with the best intentions of programs that might end at noon, might end at 1:00 or 2:00, that doesn't always meet the needs of families. So we have to be really intentional in our thinking about how we develop our programming, or how do we supplement programming that already exists to meet the needs of families and students? Again, we're going to look specifically at provider training based upon the data that we get through the summertime, professional development and technical assistance. And the other piece of that is how we align opportunities that the district is affording teachers. How do we have our community providers be able to access that same type of professional development and technical assistance? And of course, working with our investors to secure investment for year two. And then as we move into year two, again, like I said, ongoing provider training, et cetera, but increase the number of children served. If we, you know, hypothetically, right now, we're at about 3,500. Let's get to 5,000 in 2017. Let's, you know, I'm not going to pick that number tonight, but that's where we want to be. And then additionally, that we want to be city-specific or county-wide symposium to advance the call to action. So Norwalk is just one community. We have many communities that are looking at ways to enhance summer learning opportunities, and wouldn't it be a great opportunity for us to potentially regionalize some of this work, to enhance each community's impact? And then as we continue to move forward, it's all about to achieve measured improvement. So, you know, I think about the children that you were just speaking to, you know, looking at K 3. We want to be able to do the same thing, you know, throughout our different cohorts of young people in the K 12 continuum, and then be able to develop a self-sustaining and community-driven strategies. So all of our partners or providers within the Norwalk Acts membership are really wanting, you know, this direct opportunity to align their work with the district. And two things that came out very clearly in the scan is that they would love the opportunity to get the end-of-year assessment data to follow their child in their program. That's number one. And then they would like to provide the district with data at the end of the summer so that that portfolio for that child follows into that new teacher's classroom, so they know exactly what transpired for that student during that summer. And wouldn't that be a wonderful way to cut through or give knowledge base to, let's say, a teacher around beginning-of-year assessments, to know what that child went through during the summer? And number two is that they relish the opportunity to have more of an engagement with transitional experiences for students, particular 5th and 6th, and 8th and 9th. We know we have a very robust 8th and 9th, thanks to the Carver Center, but 5th and 6th grade transition as the middle school redesign rolls forward, that's going to be a critical area for that community partners want to work with the district to support as well.
Throughout the year as well.
Yep, and throughout the year as well. And lastly, if not least, and this slide is the one that I would hope that you would want to kind of take around as your elevator speech as you support this work, is that if we do this right, leadership in this effort will model true system building, leadership and innovation, a shared commitment to the methodology of collective impact, aligned productivity, cost-effective practice, and leveraged learning. You know, the cost-effective practice piece is, you know, one of my key, just what I'm very concerned about, and that is that we can spend our money much more wisely than we have in the past. And I just think that that's, you know, that Lexia Pro piece that I brought up, we, there are times when we know we're wasting seats. We just have not allocated them appropriately, and we can do better with that, and we can provide the opportunity for more children to participate in that. And this will lead to, you know, support of more children getting the appropriate access that they need and that families, and that families want. Just in closing, what I'll say is that you have an enormous opportunity as a board of ed to support our community. You know, I hear that, you know, the word used a lot. I hear the passion that you all have for the constituencies that you support and that you honor with being on this board of ed. And this is, to raise the awareness for the families that you represent around the importance of summer learning is really critical. So I encourage all of you to participate in the symposium on the 30th. Also, I think all of you are probably aware as well, Stepping Stones is hosting the Association of Children's Museum National Conference from May 4th to the 7th. And that whole theme is around collective impact and aspects around summer learning. So if within your, again, within your districts, constituencies, alerting them to these opportunities would be really, really important and very supportive to the community. And lastly, and you'll also get an email blast about this well, and then I'll shut up. Jeff Edmondson, who is the managing director of Strive Together, of which Norwalk Acts is a member of, and is the driver of all of the work that Norwalk Acts follows around, you know, and is the driver of collective impact work around education in the United States, will be coming to Norwalk on May 4th. And he, Norwalk Acts is hosting a luncheon for him, and I encourage all of you to attend that if you can. I know you all have your jobs during the day. If you haven't seen or heard Jeff Edmondson speak, I highly recommend it. If you can't come to it, go on YouTube and watch some of his videos. Then you will understand even more fully the scope of work that Norwalk Acts is involved in. We are involved in, and all of you as partners in this room, involved in some of the most innovative educational work in the United States, and we, as a community, can be really proud of that. So if you have more questions, you know my email address, but, you know, read through that packet. I look forward to seeing you at the symposium, and I hope that you can participate in the luncheon with Jeff Edmondson. But like I said, you'll get a specific invite for that as well. And I thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to ask them right now.
Any questions from board members? Okay. Very encouraging that you got all those providers to be willing to go to the symposium.
They recite. They recite. They, when we sent out the, you know, we've worked hard with our providers over the years, but when we sent out the initial invite... but when we sent out the initial invite, they all came, and they were all there. So, we had, you know, 30 folks in the room, and Ralph was there, and they're ready to go.
Great.
So, we're ready to go. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to thank Mr. Allison and Norwalk Act. This is an asset that Norwalk has that no, no other school district in our state is able to benefit from. And, you know, having partners like this, I think motivate, should motivate the district to do its part to a far greater degree. As you consider this tonight, I hope you feel that we have a good handle on the mandatory K-3 summer school and the onset of a highly effective program, but that we have so much more to do. And as you know, we have addressed this area to some degree through the Strategic Operating Plan, which inspires, where we aspire to have a school on a year-round schedule that can be offered to parents as, as a choice. In addition to that, you know, I'd like you to keep in the back of your mind that, you know, as a result of going through this last budget process, Mr. Hamilton, myself, our principals, we have so many ideas on what we should be doing and how to improve it and what our, our needs are. And this idea of having a fund for summer learning, that might be a public-private partnership that the district would contribute to, on the one hand, but our partners and donors would also contribute to, until we could reach some kind of a per-student level for, to support summer learning programs, is going to be very important. As was pointed out in the research review, more than half of the achievement gap between lower and higher-income youth can be attributed to unequal access to summer opportunities. Let's assume we could close the other half of the achievement gap by having more effective schools during the school year. This is the other part of it, and in many respects, this is what prevents the preparation gap from becoming an achievement gap. And this is a new and important frontier of work for us as, as a school district. And, you know, I would, I would ask the board for your support as we, as we move further down this road.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And last item on the work session is last day of school and graduation.
Yes, this will be very brief. You have these two sheets in front of you. The reason why you do is your previous practice as a board was actually to approve the last day of school by resolution and to set the graduation rate days by resolution. And that is really unnecessary, because this is cut and dry. So, I was hoping tonight to start a new practice of having the superintendent report this to you annually, and then the principals will confirm with their families as they are, as they are anxious to do. So, in terms of the graduation and promotion schedule, Monday, June 13th would be the middle school promotion, Tuesday, June 14th would be the Norwalk High School graduation, and Wednesday, June 15th, the Bryan McMahon graduation. This is based on the premise that these should occur on different nights, okay? So, which is what makes it necessary to spread it over, over, over three days. And then, the second sheet simply reviews what would occur to close out the, the school year and set the last day of school, given the snow days that we have had so far, and assuming we have no, no more. Now, this reflects the current calendar, not the new calendar, right? So, you see more half-days here than you would expect in, in the future. But basically, here, the last day of school is Wednesday, June 15th. That's the early is dismissal. On the, at the elementary level, it's followed by three days of, of early dismissals. At the high school level, there are three days of exams, and then there's a fourth day of makeups for exams, which contribute to all those early dismissals. Now, the wonderful thing about block scheduling is that next year, the periods are long enough that students can take their exams in a regular schedule, and there will not be the need for early dismissal for exams. So, this whole situation in terms of time and learning will be improving gradually, but this is what it would look like for the end of the school year, and assuming you can give your blessing to that tonight, I would just like to have the principals inform students and families of the schedule.
Okay. Anybody have any concerns with any of these?
I would like me to do the blessing.
Well, you're, you're very well equipped for that.
Sounds like we're, everybody's okay with this, so we can move forward.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Ms. Keys will run this one. All right.
Yes, thank you. This starts our public comment section of our agenda this evening. The first person that we have signed up is Toni Williams. You will have approximately three minutes. I'll wave my hand when you get to the 30-second mark, and then I'll let you know they have about 30 seconds. And just state your full name and address for the record.
Sure.
Thank you.
My, my name's Toni Williams, and I reside at 20 Fairfield Avenue. I'm a new member of District B. I just want to spend just a few minutes to talk about two things. One, the School Governance Council. I attended the policy meeting, thinking that it was an opportunity to share some thoughts, and they shared that tonight is the night to do that. And so, and I'm speaking from the perspective as a resident and an alum of Norwalk High School. So, a couple of things. One, the defining, Section 5, defining every effort. I appreciate Dr. Adamowski's offer to provide concrete ideas as to how to do this, because I believe that if it were known currently, you wouldn't have to have it in there. And I just encourage us to be intentional about providing that framework. And I am going to follow up on some concrete ideas. The training element, I was an assistant director of, Assistant Dean of Students and Director of Diversity at a private independent school, and worked on peer mediation efforts and trainings. And I just think it's really important to include some meeting management, diversity training. It's, it's important. And then, the last point around the idea of the onus is on the principal to make sure that those efforts are executed, to make sure that you're getting the message out to encourage parents to participate. I would argue or present the consideration that in addition to the principal, the leadership is on Board of Ed members of demonstrating and being intentional about connecting with your constituents and in getting them to be involved and not relying just on PTO. And, and then my last point was in regards to my experience attending the Saturday public hearing at South Norwalk Public Library, and I attended yesterday's at Norwalk High School. And what concerned me, first, I want to thank you for providing that opportunity for residents to, to share, and thanks to those board members that were willing to be present. What was concerning for me was a moment when a young African-American male wanted to speak, and an elder was emotional and passionate, right on, and, and kind of shot it down. And so, what I'm, my feedback is to remember that we all come from different walks, and it's important somehow, I'm looking to the board to manage that meeting, to manage that meeting dialogue a bit better, so that everyone is able to be heard and no one is left feeling like I showed up, and for what?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
All right, that ends, that's the only person that signed up, so that ends our public comment section.
All right. That leaves a motion to adjourn. Mr. Casemus.
I got the second.
And you got the second. Call of favor?
Aye.
Approved, and the meeting is adjourned.